We started a little early, but it looks like we started with pretty much no hiccups. So I think pretty much everybody's on. Anybody have any questions or have any technical issues before we get going?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I don't know anything to ask. Cool it, Phil, I see you. Maurice, this is Tommy Donovan. I'd like to thank Hunter for his coming to our homes and being so patient with us old folks. He's a fine young fellow.
I appreciate him, Mr. Sanders. He has, he's been very helpful to everyone here and everyone else in the courthouse as well. He's a very intelligent young man and we do appreciate his service. He was up for an internship with Ted Exman, Tom, and kind of fell through. On the flip side, we're really glad to have you.
They lost our game.
When are we going back to normal, Mayor? Mayor, when are we going back to normal? When are we going back to normal?
Well, I don't know that we'll ever go back to normal, but as far as meeting wise, we should be ready to meet back in person in the June meeting. That's, that's the goal unless something major were to happen.
Okay.
Gene, don't get too comfortable there now.
Do I look comfortable?
Yeah, dude. Like you're about to go to sleep.
Rocking in this recliner, man.
Yeah, I see that.
I like this.
All right, if we would, it is six o'clock and we'll go ahead and get started. And I guess for the sake of ease, I'd ask everybody to bow their head and I'll lead us in prayer tonight. Lord, thank you for this day and this night. Thank you for us that are here. Help us to do the work and do thy will. Help us to try to make this county more successful and lead us and guide us and watch over us and protect us. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen. And if we would, if you have a flag, we, I've got a few people here in my office. We're going to stand and do the pledge of allegiance. All right. Thank y'all. The, Hunter, you want to go ahead and put a copy of the agenda? The first item on the agenda or the, I need a motion to approve minutes of the April 2020 meeting.
Tommy Sanders, I approve.
Got a motion made. I have a second. Jay King. Jay King, second. Any discussion? Any objection? If there are no objections, then minutes are approved as presented.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Did we have a question as to the minutes?
Did anyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
There was no reference to the meeting having been virtual. It indicates courthouse.
Okay. Virtual. Are you recommending we add that verbiage to the minute?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Ms. Sanders, would you, would you change your motion to be approved with the addition of that being listed as a virtual meeting?
That's correct. I approve that.
Same second, Mr. King?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any objections? If not, minutes are approved as presented. The next item we have on the agenda is a resolution to request unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to the state treasurer under the Unclaimed Property Act.
Don, I make the motion with approval.
Joe, I second it.
Okay. Don Conell to approve. Joe Purcell, second. Any other objections? If not, all in favor saying aye.
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 Okay. Now, I apologize as we got off. I need to, we need to do roll call. So Summer will, will, will call out and make sure everyone's properly presented tonight.
Okay, everyone ready? Lawrence Andrews?
Here.
Mark Bentley?
Here.
Mark Bentley?
Here.
Barry Britt? Barry Britt? Joe Carmack?
Here.
Jason Cressman?
Here.
Don Conlin?
Here.
Tommy Donovan?
Here.
Gene Edwards?
Here.
Jesse Edwards?
Here's.
Sandra Hughes? James Jones?
Here.
Kay Jordan?
Here.
Dennis King?
Here.
Jay King?
Here.
Dale McCaslin?
Here.
Terry Mills?
Here.
Eugene Pugh?
Here.
Joe Purcell?
Here.
Todd Rankin? Tommy Sanders?
Here.
Lynn Wood Shee Make?
Here.
Lowell Tillman?
Here.
Deborah Tice?
Here.
Dan Undridge?
Here.
Hunter, Barry Britt's having trouble contacting you. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to apply for the litter grant for fiscal year 2021.
Dennis King, I make the motion. I second it.
Mr. King made the motion. Mr. Shee makes second. Any other discussion? Any objections? If not, all in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to amend fixed asset policy for Lauderdale County Water System. This is a change that is in very much aligned with what the county's already doing. It's just raising the threshold for some of their equipment as far as their depreciation schedule goes.
It's Barry, I'll make a motion, we adopt it.
Barry Britt motion to approve.
Tommy Donovan, second.
Who had the second?
Lynn Wood Shee Make, second.
Lynn Wood, second. Any other discussion? Any objections? If not, all in favor saying aye. All right. Next item on the agenda is the trustee's quarterly report. We, we sent this out via email and each one of you got a copy of that. And I'll kind of give you just a second to, to look over it. And then if we have any discussions, I have Ms. Conrad here to, should be able to answer anything.
RDB report, which is the quarterly report. If you'll go ahead and just turn to the third page, I'm sorry, the fourth page. That's the overview of the summary of assets. Of course, our cash on hand, that's the monies that we start in our office each day, the $600. The cash in bank is $13,155,292.32. Our investments are $20,003.97, 73.40. Accounts receivables, that's our outstanding tax reliefs. And speaking of tax reliefs, they have extended that to July, so we are still working some of those. If you know of anybody that is still qualified, we can still take those applications through July this year because of the virus. Total assets, we're showing $33,562,593.72. Quickly, I'll go over. I don't know if y'all got the sheet that I turned over to the Chancery Court on, in May, May 6th. Of course, they extended that this year also. We turned over $146,304, which is a very, very good total. I feel like we could have maybe had a little more income on that if the virus hadn't hit us because we had several people that had planned to, of course, pay their 18 taxes that weren't able to because they were either laid off or lost their jobs. So still, that's a very, very good total. We used to turn over five and 600,000. And I have to give credit to my girls in the office. They really, really work these accounts. And we had, I think, only maybe one public utility that didn't pay. And that was a very small one, maybe a bankruptcy. Going back to the investments, as we all know, the rates have bottomed out again on us. Most of them that are retiring now are at two and a half. And I'm only getting, I think it's Friday, I called around and the highest I could get was .60. So we're going to see a big drop in our investments come this time next year.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Conrad? I'll make note of a couple of things. Typically, we put aside 7% for delinquency, which is roughly $440,000. And over the last four years, she's come in way under that every year on collection. So we've been very fortunate. We've been able to pick up a little extra income off of what normally was bad debt or delinquency on property taxes. So they're, they're doing a very good job. We probably lead in the top 15% of counties in Tennessee on property collection, property tax collections on time and collected. So the trustee's office is doing a great job. Any question for Ms. Conrad?
I have a question for trustee. Is the hospital caught up on their taxes?
The hospital? The hospital is still in bankruptcy, so there it is, a standstill right at the moment. Yeah. We, we can't move forward on those until at what time it comes out of bankruptcy.
Is that included in that number?
No, sir. Let me double check, but here's the sheet right here. There's no way it is because there's not a number. Yeah, yeah. No, sir, it does not include what we would have collected from the hospital. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Conrad. The next item we'll move down to is the school budget amendments. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Gill.
Do we need to approve this trustee's report?
Do we need to approve?
The one we just?
No, we don't need to approve that. It just has to present, be presented quarterly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several general purpose budget amendments for your consideration tonight. The first one is GP 30 for $560,000. And this is a transfer amendment within the general purpose budget. And if you look at the decreases, that's after reviewing our accounts at this point in the school year, we believe that we'll have excess money in these accounts. And we're transferring it to the accounts that are in the increase column. And again, it covers accounts throughout the general purpose budget. The next budget amendment is GP 31 for $1,230 and is to record an award from the Tennessee Arts Commission for Student Ticket Safety Grant for Halls Elementary School. I think they had people from Playhouse on the Square to come up to Halls Elementary and present some plays just prior to spring break. Next budget amendment is GP 32 for $214 and is to record an additional, an amount for the Healthy Students, Stronger Learners Grant. Michelle Brazier, in charge of coordinated school health, manages this money, but the state gave us an additional $214. The next budget amendment is GP 33 for $60 and is to record contributions to the Family Resource Center from New Hope Baptist Church. And they're faithful about supporting Family Resource Center. The next budget amendment is GP 34 for $286,000. And this again is a transfer amendment within the special education budget to meet anticipated needs for the remainder of the school year. Daniel Mobley is in charge of special education. And again, we're taking money in the decrease column and moving it to the accounts in the increase column to meet needs for the remainder of the school year. The next budget amendment is GP 35 for a total of $2,482. It too is a transfer amendment within the Save the Children Grant at Ripley Primary School. There are several pots of money within the Save the Children Grant. And we're just, they're just moving money around so that they can spend it before the end of this school year because this is one of those grants, if we do not spend it, then we lose access to it. And the last one is GP 36 for $70,000 and is to record the award from the state of the School Resource Officer Grant. And we were able to employ an additional SRO in this school year. And the state provided $70,000 for the salary and salary related benefits for the SRO. And by the way, the SROs are actually employed through the juvenile court. And then the school system just reimburses the county for all the related expenses for the SROs. And that's, those are the amendments, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve school budget amendments?
Tommy Donovan, I'll make the motion.
Tommy Donovan made the motion. Lynn Wood?
Tommy Sanders?
Tommy Sanders had the second?
I did.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Dennis King?
Yes, sir.
SRO officers do we have in the school system here?
Is five, is it not, Mr. Gill?
I think that's right.
Is that enough to cover?
We have at least one at each school.
We actually have two at Ripley High School, Mayor. And we have one that works at both Halls High and Halls Junior High. And then one at Halls Elementary and one at Ripley Middle and Ripley Elementary, I believe.
That's, I think you're correct.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for us to think about adding some more officers to the school system.
I think that's something that would, you know, could be brought up at the budget meetings. And I'll address those as we get started on those here next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mayor, doesn't the officer that works at the elementary, he works elementary and primary both, doesn't he? No, I think the one that works at, and I may be wrong. I think the works, the one that works at the primary works at the primary and the, what's the other school by the riding range?
Learning Academy, Oxford School.
At the middle school? I think that's correct.
I believe.
Okay.
I'll find out for sure commissioners before June and be sure we have that right.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a roll call vote. Summer?
Mr. Lawrence Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Barry Britt?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Carmack?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Cressman?
Yes.
Mr. Don Conell?
Yes.
Mr. Tommy Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Gene Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse Edwards?
Yes.
James Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kay Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis King?
Yes.
Mr. Jay King?
Yes.
Mr. Dale McCaslin?
Yes.
Mr. Terry Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Eugene Pugh? Is that a yes? Mr. Eugene?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Purcell?
Yes.
Mr. Tommy Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn Wood Shee Make?
Yes.
Mr. Lowell Tillman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dan Undridge?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have the Lauderdale County General Fund Budget Amendments. We have $90,941 debit contributions, which this is the reimbursement of the schools for the, for the SROs through the grant and through a, a prior arrangement with the school system. And then number two, if it's okay, we'll just vote on them together. Number two is an additional number that was given to us by the state to record charges dealing with the COVID-19. These are, will be grant dollars and of no, no cost to the state. So we're just looking at a, at a way to, to monitor and to spend those funds as they come in. And I would entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments on county general.
Joe Purcell approves. Lawrence Andrews, second. Lawrence Andrews.
Okay. Lawrence Andrews, second. All right, any discussion? If not, I will entertain a roll call vote.
Mr. Lawrence Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Barry Britt?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Carmack?
Yes.
Mr. Jason Cressman?
Yes.
Mr. Don Conell?
Yes.
Mr. Tommy Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Gene Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse Edwards?
Yes.
Ms. Sandra Hughes? Sandra? Sandra? Mr. James Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kay Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis King?
Yes.
Mr. Jay King?
Yes.
Mr. Dale McCaslin?
Yes.
Mr. Terry Mills?
I don't care.
Linda, yes, Ms. Sandra Hughes? Terry Mills? Did he say Terry Mills? Mr. Eugene Pugh?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Purcell?
Yes.
Mr. Tommy Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn Wood Shee Make?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn Wood?
I'm here. Yes.
Mr. Lowell Tillman?
Yes.
Mr. Deborah Tice?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Undridge?
Yes.
Linda, did you hear Ms. Sandra Hughes say yes?
Yes, I got you finally.
Thank you. I thought y'all wanted me to yell mute, I guess. I don't know.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, you have budget amendments from the Water Board. I think they're kind of self-explanatory. The big budget amendment, as you'll see, comes from, on the very last one, is $306,000 coming from reserves going to capital, plant and system miscellaneous. Kind of bring you up to date on where the water system is. We've been struggling with the water system for the last few years. And I want to commend the Water Board on working through and getting us headed in the right direction. A couple of months ago, we were at a water loss rate of almost 50%. And a big portion of that $300,000 is going toward meter, or water loss survey and testing to try to find those water leaks. Last month, the water loss was reduced by about 8%. It's down to right around 40%. And we hope that they can continue with that drop. Part of these other funds will include some master meters located on eight zones in the water department that will allow them to keep up with what water goes through those zone meters and be able to compare it against what water has been billed in those zones. So just another step to try to improve the system and keep costs down as, as much as we can. Do I have a motion to approve the water system budget amendments?
I'll make a motion.
Lynn Wood Shee Make made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Sandra Hughes, second.
Sandra Hughes, second. Okay, any discussion? No discussion, I will entertain a roll call vote. Ms. Summer?
Mr. Lawrence Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Bentley.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Breyett.
Yes.
Mr. Joe Carmack.
Yes.
Mr. Jason Cressman.
Yes.
Mr. Don Canal.
Yes.
Mr. Tommy Donovan.
Yes.
Mr. Gene Edwards.
Yes.
Mr. Jesse Edwards.
Yes.
Ms. Sandra Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. James Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Kay Jordan.
Yes.
Mr. Dennis King. Mr. Dennis King.
Yes.
Mr. Jay King.
Yes.
Mr. Dale McCaslin.
Yes.
Mr. Terry Mills. Terry? Okay. Mr. Eugene Pugh.
Yes.
Mr. Joe Priscill.
Yes.
Mr. Todd. Oh, he's not here. Mr. Tommy Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Linwood Sheumay.
Yes.
Mr. Lowell Tillman.
Yes.
Mr. Ever Tyes.
Yes.
Mr. Dan Unrich.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Next item, we need a motion to approve the building permits into the revenue cycle for county government.
Make a motion, Tommy Sanders.
Got a motion, Mr. Sanders.
I second. Kay Jordan.
Ms. Kay Jordan, second. Any objections? Not all in favor of saying no? Okay, on other business, I'll kind of give you a run-through of updates. As of five eleven, our emergency management service has ordered from TIMA over a thousand gowns, goggles, shoe covers, thermometers, face shields. We have received a hundred Tyvek suits, four hundred masks, eight hundred N-95 masks, six thermometers, four hundred shoe coverings, one hundred goggles, fifty face shields, and a box of gloves. And almost all of the received products have been given to the first responders and/or the hospital here in the community. Lauderdale County, in addition to that, has purchased over two thousand masks for the employees of the county. The county health department has distributed over three thousand reusable masks with another four thousand to be distributed in the coming week. Now, these were masks that were promised by Governor Lee to make sure that we have enough masks for every resident in Lauderdale County. And we continue, as those come in, we'll try to make sure they're out to those individuals that need them. As far as COVID-19, we currently have forty-four cases. We have twenty-two that have recovered, and we've had one death. That leaves us with twenty-one active cases as of today.
How many did they have from the prison?
Somewhere between nine and ten.
Okay.
We had, on the dry-thru, we had two hundred and forty-four tests that were done at the school, and we had only one of those come back positive. So we were very fortunate in that. And the community's doing a pretty good job of making sure that the residents do the social distancing, and we want to continue to do that. I know the school system has graduation tonight. The county's purchased an additional six thousand masks just for disposable masks for that presentation to try to make sure that those folks are kept safe as well. Meetings, we will start next Thursday at five o'clock on our budget meetings. We will meet down at the Highway Department's conference room or break room. That facility will give us enough room to spread out and make sure that we're far enough apart, and also provide us the computer, television, information that we may need in going forward with the budget. I think, feel pretty confident, unless something major happens, that we will meet in person at the June meeting. If we can't meet, and don't think we can get everything worked out where we can keep everybody segregated here at the courthouse. I've been discussions with UT Martin. They have a nice auditorium facility that, you know, we can get thirty, forty folks in there and keep them spread out and conduct business. Because I know it's an inconvenience to each and every one to have to go through these Zoom meetings. We're all in learning mode, but I do want to thank everyone tonight for being here. And that's all the other business I have at the moment. Does anyone else have any business they want to bring before us?
Tommy Sanders, do we have more than one ventilator at our hospital, or we still have just one?
We have two ventilators that are operational, and they have two inverted air pressure rooms, air pressure rooms that they have secured or set aside in the event that they have somebody who's positive at the hospital.
Thank you.
Mayor? Jay King?
Yes.
Question, is there any, do you have any updated status on the hospital as far as it's bankrupt? I know it's still in bankruptcy, but is there any word? I know they haven't been having any court or anything, so. The hospital is still in bankruptcy. Very fortunate, they received some of the governor's funds for rural hospitals. They had asked for five hundred thousand originally. They were awarded two thirty-three, and then I think they saw the need we had here in Lauderdale County and what we do with the funds that they give us, that they've awarded the full five hundred now. So they've gotten some more money from the federal government, so they're able to at least make sure that they cover the basic necessities for our community. To give you the answer to your question, there's really no update. The bankruptcy or the auction, the sale, has been put off. I don't look for that to change to probably July or August timeframe, and that's just a guess. I understand we have a new CEO at the hospital? I think that's correct. All right, thank you, sir. Any other business or questions?
Mayor Joe Priscill.
Yes.
What about prosecution of the people there before that took all that money that could make it be recovered, maybe?
I have no idea. You know, when the big guys get prosecuted, it seems like it takes some years. But I know the guy's still in Florida. The U.S. Attorney General's Office has been looking at him, but I couldn't give you an update on that. I will try to find out some additional information as we go forward.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else?
Mayor Hayes, I have a question. This is Kay.
Yes, ma'am.
How are things coming with this housing development? For, you know, this grant that came through about this new housing?
Well, it's coming slow, but it is moving forward. They presented the set of plans in Nashville, so I feel pretty confident that we'll be going on that sometime this summer.
Okay, thank you.
After a much, what, we applied for that grant three years ago?
Yeah. I have this one lady that constantly asks me, so.
I totally understand. Last time I was in Nashville, we had a very heated argument with THDA, and I, you know, I flat-out told him, I said, heck, my folks aren't going to be alive if y'all don't get on the ball on getting these houses done. But they have been, they have been approved. Every one of them that we have is a, they're basically getting a new house. They're going to clear the old houses down and build a completely new house. So that'll be five new residences going on in Lauderdale County sometime in the summer or early fall.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, who's putting in, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Who's putting in the new cell tower?
Well, you asked me a question that I can't answer. It's Verizon. I can't think of the name of the company that's doing it offhand. It's going on the north end of the county. I know that helps a little bit. If, I'll be glad to find that information out and shoot you an email on it.
All right, thank you.
Maurice Joe Carmack.
Yes, sir.
What about any funds coming from the state or federal for the county? Are we going to receive some COVID funds? And what are, what are we going to do with them?
We hope so. You know, under Governor Lee's budget, in the original budget, there's roughly a little over a million dollars coming to Lauderdale County. Five, four hundred and eighty thousand was coming prior, and then he added some more money in for the distressed counties. So we should have, you know, as long as they leave that in the budget, we'll have that coming next year, and that will apply to some one-time purchases, equipment upgrades, those kind of things. There should be some federal money coming through from COVID. That was one of the budget amendments that we addressed tonight. And in doing so, we've already started making sure, or we started early on to make sure we've got a good file on everything that's costing the community that's related to COVID. As far as federally, we don't know what that amount's going to be yet.
Mayor, what kind of equipment?
Pretty much whatever kind the county commission decides on. The way I understand it in the original amendment, what my plan will be to do as we go through budgets, we'll talk a little bit about it. I will give you my best-case recommendations on what we need, and I'm sure that the other departments will give the budget committee their recommendations on what they want and need as well.
Good answer.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor, Tom Sanders, thank you for the laptops. They really work for us, thank you.
All right, well, I hope, while we're talking, is everybody okay getting their agendas via email?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Well, that's going to make it a lot easier on us, and it'll make it a lot easier to get you more information as well. And we've set up the database of all the email addresses, so I'll try to start shooting out some emails with just some little quick updates, you know, on things as we go forward. Remember, five o'clock, the twenty-eighth, which is the next Thursday, budget, first budget committee meeting at the Highway Department. Do we have any notaries? No notaries this month. Do we have anything else? If not, the only thing we have left to vote on now is a motion to adjourn.
Motion. A lot of seconds on that one.
All right, well, thank y'all very much. And as with anyway, as always, if you need anything, call our office. If I'm not in office, leave a message, and I promise you, I will call you back, or email me the one, whatever's best for you guys.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank y'all.
Y'all have a great night.
Good night.